Good evening. This is the City Council Appointment Subcommittee for February 20, 2019. In attendance is myself, Peg Coniff, Chair of the Committee. We also have Counselor Joe McCoy and Counselor Omar Gomez. We also have Wes Hardy, who is here as well, from the public. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 6?
So move.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Upstaying. Motion passes. Public speak time. Of anything not on the agenda.
On the agenda.
If you want to talk about this, when we get to it, you can talk about it. All right. Okay. So now we have the mayoral appointments, that for the Community Relations Committee, as well as three other committee nominations. So let us begin with the -- yeah, let's start with the Community Relations Committee.
Okay.
So we can do this -- I would prefer that we do one at a time, make a motion one at a time, and then we can discuss each individual at that time. And we'll just go right down the list. So the first nominee is Armon LaPointe. And -- hello, Mayor.
Hi, Mayor.
And I spoke to Armon in the last couple of days. I spoke to Armon in the last couple of days. He's a longtime resident. He has some insight he would like to bring to the table. He's interested in helping the new people that are part of the community. He wants it to be more about the community and less about the committee. Anybody else have any comments on Armon LaPointe?
I know him socially, and I think he's, you know, would be a good addition. I think he's very level-headed, and I think, yeah, I don't know if he's -- yeah, he's a lovely guy at that.
Okay. Omar, anything to add? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll move to appoint Armon LaPointe. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, second one. I have not had the opportunity to talk to John Norman. I sent an email. I didn't hear back. That's totally fine. I don't have a lot of information about John. I don't know if either of you do, and Mayor, if you have anything from your regulation over.
I see two committee members.
I know him.
Okay.
His position at the middle school.
He's like a counselor or supervisor.
A counselor, yeah.
Oh, okay.
He's a counselor at the middle school.
Oh, at the middle school?
Yeah. I know him because all my three daughters went to the middle school, and he's a great guy. I think he's a great add to this committee.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay. Joe, anything to add?
No.
I'll take a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. And the next one is Jim Valancourt. I also know Jim and spoke to Jim today. And so what I will say about Jim is he is passionately committed to this community. He's, as we know, he's on the planning board, he's on the housing partnership. I don't know what COD is. He has it listed on his app. Is that another?
Commission on Disability.
Oh. So we know that Jim is highly engaged in the community, and I talked to him today, and I -- hi. I mentioned to him that I had some concerns, albeit, you know, for whatever we want to take with my concerns, that I had some concerns based on, you know, just what I know of him. I know him, and I'm friends with him on Facebook, and yada, yada. So we talked through, you know, I said I know that you have a lot of things to say on Facebook, and I want him to continue to do that, and that there might be some concerns with others. And as we talked through it, you know, and I had talked to some other people who know Jim, and I think less of his Facebook page as an indicator of Jim. I don't really use Facebook as an indicator of anyone, because it's not really fair. If people are not on Facebook, then you have nothing to gauge them against. So, yeah, he's really passionate. He has a few things to say. He has a lot of reasons for some of the things he posts that are personal and impactful to his life and his journey up to today, and that's fine. And what I do, and I encourage anyone else who may be offended by what he posts, is snooze him. That's what I do. Sometimes I'm like, no! But I know his heart, and I know that he is committed to helping this community and the people who are on this community, in this community. And so I -- and I admit openly that I was -- my pendulum was swinging one way. It was not in favor. And I did some soul searching over the last 24, 48 hours, and I talked to Jim, and I'm more comfortable than I have been. And I feel very confident and comfortable in approving Jim to this committee, because I do believe that conflict in a committee like this is probably okay, and that if people disagree, you're going to get movement and you're going to get decisions. And if everybody's sitting around the table nodding in agreement, nothing's going to happen. I think people having contrary opinions to one another is a good thing. And, you know, his Facebook notwithstanding, I don't know if we can look at every one of these. I tried to look up some of these people. They don't have Facebook pages. So does that speak to their character? I don't know. Probably not. So that's how I feel about Jim. Any other -- do you guys have any input, comments, questions?
I kind of agree with you and disagree at the same time. I agree with you that everybody have the right to post whatever they want on Facebook or any page that's personal. I agree with you in that part. I disagree in that in this committee having that kind of contrast is good, because what we are looking for is a community relation committee. What he posts on Facebook could offend a lot of people, and I think the purpose of this committee is the opposite of that, not try to create any bad atmosphere with anyone out there. Again, I agree, that's his personal page. He can post whatever he wants there. And like you said, he served in different committees in our city, and truly, in those committees, he would prefer, he would prefer for them. But in this case, this committee is for relationships, a relation in our community. I think it's not good for this committee.
Joe?
Yeah, I've had the same thing. Again, I have no problem with free speech, so this is what we all have. And if he was applying for Man-Hand Railroad Committee or something like that, but, you know, this is a committee that is supposed to feel everyone in our community welcome. And if someone walks into a committee and there is someone who is already posting opinions, and you assume if you're posting them that they're posting because they believe it, that may be contrary to other people in the community, are they going to feel like they're getting a fair shake? Again, but, you know, I struggle too, because I know Jim, and I, you know, and I have a spouse who's passionate about his political views. I can come back and haunt him as well, so I know the feeling. So I'm sort of torn about where to go. And furthermore, I think I -- Jim works for us. He has milk for us. We pay him money, so I think because of that, I have to excuse myself in this vote anyway, because he milks, he is milked for us, and we pay, I pay him, so I think I can't really vote on this. But I do understand, obviously, the concern about this appointment.
Yeah, I would say to the people who are afraid that they might not feel comfortable coming -- this is a committee of 11. He's one of 11. He's not 11 of 11. There are 10 other people who also could have offensive ideas about what's going on in this community, and people may not feel -- because you don't have a Facebook page, doesn't make you immune to being kind of, you know, out there with your political views. And I would also say, you know, he's been raped over the coals on Facebook, unintentionally, like not to his -- people have raped him over the coals without him even knowing about it in other, you know, posts, which I am not a fan of at all. Like, if you're going to do it face-to-face, otherwise step off. But anyway, in my view, I think there's a significant amount of people in this community who trust him very much and would go to him first than maybe some of these other people. And similarly, there are probably people on here that other people might feel comfortable going to, that they might not feel comfortable going to someone else. That's kind of the point, that we want all of the community to feel comfortable to come to this group. And I don't know how we can get 11 people all aligned that everyone's going to like all the time and feel comfortable going. As I said at the beginning, I do think conflict is good. This is going to be a hard committee, and they're going to have a lot of stuff on their plate that is not pretty. And one thing I know about Jim is that he doesn't see the differences. He doesn't look at people that way. He has very strong political leanings, but in terms of humanity and human rights, he's right there. So, you know, we'll vote our conscience, but I really wanted to get that out, that I struggled with this. And I fully intended to call him yesterday and say, I can't do this. And the more I thought about it, I talked to a few different people, and then I talked to Jim today, and I feel okay with it. So with that, anyone else? Anything?
I'm sure if I could.
You may.
So the committee, the Community Relations Committee, without going into the history, is definitely one not of -- it's not a community-friendly committee. It is meant to take on how really the members of the community relate to each other, and we saw some very divisive community conversations on Facebook, but also in our own city council chambers around different pieces of legislation put forward, either by citizen petition or by members of the council. And that was a very structured, polarizing conversation, just by the nature of city council and some community meetings, and how we run our public processes to make sure that everybody is heard, but also that wants to participate, but also every piece of municipal legislation or information goes through the same process and checks and balances. The Community Relations Committee is somewhat of an anomaly. They don't vote. They really process and put forward something with a vote as a planning board would. They are starting and listening to conversations and bringing community intervention tools, such as maybe a pasta supper or a structured public forum with a guest speaker around a topic that'll go forward. To have somebody with political leanings that are to some opposing or deemed extreme quite honestly deserves a place on this committee. I don't want a secondary conversation, a divisive, polar-opposite conversation to happen off of the committee, where somebody who holds that position, you know, those political leanings, coming to the committee and not looking at any possible faces that won't hear them or consider them. I do believe there to be some very difficult conversations to have among the 11. The 11 that I am putting forward are very different in their thoughts and experiences in life. And during those, you know, there were some folks who were very interested that I was looking to appoint, and I asked all of the folks I talked to, we submitted applications. This is great. I'm not sure where I am with my decisions, but I do want you to take a couple of days and really think about the spotlight this committee appointment is going to bring to you and to your life and to Facebook or shopping at Biggie's, because it's real. And if you drop back and said, I'm not, like, I am passionate about this, but I am not, like, I thought this was something different, or I thought this was more of kind of a community cheerleading conversation, and democracy is not, it's really messy. And this idea, quite honestly, and it's been my uproar of late, and I have said it a couple of times publicly, is that the reality of, the idea that East Hampton is welcoming, the idea that East Hampton is gracious, or doesn't have bias or racism, and we know that not to be true. We know we have individuals in our community that don't feel welcome. We know that we have racist incidences, and we know that there are some folks who know who's doing, who is doing those things. That's just the shadow of democracy. And to have a committee that is so, you know, similar or same, or of the same, you know, the same thought pattern is, one, I think, a crude and naive assumption by me, the appointed authority, that I happen to know that Jim has a Facebook. I've actually never seen it. But, okay, I don't know. Somebody who doesn't have a Facebook, who's to say what group they're a part of? The willingness to serve, the conversations, the cover letters were very difficult, you know. Everybody was asked very difficult questions. And I don't think, if anything, the last, you know, nine years in this country has underscored is that we don't know what is in anybody's, in anybody's mind. And what they might put out publicly doesn't mean that that's something, an ideal or value they hold. But there is value, and there is voice that needs to be given to every one of those, whether I or anybody else agrees for it. And First Amendment is First Amendment. And it's not just what you like, and it's not just what you want to argue for, being covered under the First Amendment because you really like it, and somebody says, no. And so when we're looking at, you know, to not make it about Jim, because this conversation can be about any applicant to the Community Relations Committee, we don't know what their full mind is. We know that they're willing to sit forward. They're willing to sit down with me for 45 minutes. They were asked to take pause and think about what this would do to their lives and where it would put, that they were going to sit on a public committee and talk about very difficult things. And the other is, they're making the rules. I mean, the expectation, this is not going to start off with planning board. You know, there's materials to read and to think about, what other communities have done, but also what our community needs to do, based on the Spirit Report, but also all this other information that we've gotten. They have to decide how it's going to be conducted. You know, they will, I'm sure, have requests of me to bring in speakers and supports and trainings of how to facilitate these conversations. You know, there are other communities that have done similar committees, and it has taken them 18 months to get to what is a fully-formed meeting. That's not a work session, where they're really ready to start talking and providing, you know, a real full public hearing. You know, the work is done in public, but it's, you know, the commitment, I mean, there, this is a tough subject. It's a tough discussion. I think it's one that the community, East Hampton, is very willing to have. It's not about having warts. It's just really uncomfortable stuff that we really need to, and the community wants to look at. And this group of 11 people are committed not only to serve, but to really create a balanced community forum, where people feel okay coming forward, not necessarily for a hug and a cup of cocoa, but to have a willing partner permanently in government to work for, you know, a better sense of communication than what they have now, and to form that.
See, I agree with everything what you're saying, and I think it should be messing up to a point, but I want every single person from East Hampton who walks in the committee feeling, I am going to get a fair shake.
And I would, a fair hearing. I mean, there's no investigatory or hand-down. They need to be listened to.
And that's actually probably what you should have asked Jim.
Yeah.
I know you, you, you know, will you be able to listen to people who disagree with you?
And I would say on the other committees, as I said, he holds, there have been some very controversial things that maybe would indicate, based on what's on his Facebook, that he would be against. And he would drop, and he listened. You know, and those are, you know, this is a very unique committee, granted, and it's hard to compare it to disability, you know, I hear that. But all sorts of things. I mean, Commission on Disability is a very tough, you know, commission, and, you know, you're integrating things from the state, and not everybody agrees on the path forward for full accessibility, you know, mobile, visually, mental health. And it's a robust conversation in that committee, but it's not one that Jim closes his ears in. That has not been actually my personal experience of that.
Yeah. And again, my personal experience has been the same, but...
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess, I guess where I start to kind of is that he's very public about how he feels. Some of these other folks, to your point, may feel exactly the same way, they just don't do it on Facebook, and we won't know that. So he, we are evaluating him because he's on Facebook, and that's easy, because that's a thing. God help us if we start evaluating me, because they're just going to think I focus on dogs. And, you know, that's so one-dimensional. But I really feel like, you know, if we're going to evaluate Jim based on his Facebook, then we need to go back and look at everybody's Facebook page and evaluate it on the same level and find them all on Facebook.
By the way that I did.
And some of them, I couldn't find John.
Exactly. I looked for everybody, and so was the other.
Yeah, exactly. I did the same thing. And so then where does that leave us?
Who can I pose two questions to?
You may.
So if you were being considered to appointment for this committee, I left on your Facebook page, and I saw on the dogs, could I not wonder if you have any voice or aptitude or interest in listening to humans?
Exactly. You might.
I don't know. And likewise, as far as Facebook and looking at people's names and seeing, which I think is fine, due diligence, but a lot of people have Facebook accounts and it's not their name. I mean, and they very purposely, you know, do that for whatever reason. I'm not assuming that intent, but just maybe they, you know, maybe they're a prominent public official.
But we know that this page is his page.
Absolutely. And I'm saying, he doesn't back away from it at all.
No, no, no. I'm just...
He owned it today when I talked to him about it, and he's like, no, I don't. And he goes, and here's why. I do that because...
And that concerns me. I mean, so he can put up a very graphic or detailed, polarizing political cartoon out of an opinion page on some piece of journalism, and so because he's chosen a side or put something forward, I don't think the assumption should be automatically that he's not going to listen to somebody when they come before. No more than when I read, you know, The Republican, and I see a political cartoon I don't agree with, I don't feel like I'm going to just not read that, or they won't hold my opinion on something else. You know, if nothing else, Facebook has made us all political pundits, right?
We're brilliant.
Yeah, I mean, Mark Zuckerberg, getting just so, so wealthy, so, so wealthy.
So any other, do you guys have any comments?
Yeah, I was going to point out that I don't think that the opinions expressed by Mr. Valancourt are in the political minority of our city. So although he may be more extreme or more open, he's definitely not part of a political minority. So he's saying in the loudest and the rudest way things that the majority of the city would agree with anyway. So I think that if we look at the design, the purpose of the Community Relations Committee, I think that that might hamper some abilities to be able to have a reasonable discussion about any number of different things. The other thing is, for, with Facebook, if, I mean, I think it's fine to hold the standard of, we don't know what other people have or don't have, or what views people have or don't have. The problem is, though, that going forward, when we are doing appointments for different committees and things, you know, let's remember this, and then we can't really say, like, oh, someone said this, that, or the other thing on Facebook, or someone posted this thing or that thing, and then disqualify or discount someone.
Based on Facebook.
Based on Facebook.
I agree with that.
So I think, well, I think we want to be really careful about that, because, I mean, people could post things that are, you know, abhorrent, and there could be massive public outcry about someone posted, and you'd be stuck in a position of, well, you know, we're not going to judge people based on their Facebook. So I just, that's kind of how I feel about it.
And that's good. No, I appreciate that. And I would say to that, that there's a lot of vetting that goes through. It's not, we don't just look at their Facebook page. I mean, I have a personal conversation with everybody. I think they have to go through the mayor, and you have significant conversations with them. So this is a data point of many data points on Jim. It's the most visible, and probably the least pleasing about him, but it is not all-encompassing of who Jim is. It's just the most public, I guess. But there's more that we know about Jim through vetting, and that's how we do all of our appointments. The mayor vets them. I call all of them. I think we know a lot of them as well. So, you know, I guess there's a lot more than just Facebook that we look at.
Right. I just wonder if we did the inverse of that. If he was in the political minority and had posts like that, would that be a disqualifier? And I think, okay, I think it might be. I think it might be.
Well, then, you know, I would love to have that conversation to the next person who actually applies. That would be nice, to have that conversation, as opposed to it being theoretical. Let's have somebody actually apply and help to have the conversation.
I think, I think my point is that if...
You're saying if the tables were turned and this, he was of a different political persuasion?
If he was a Tea Party-berther Republican who was posting things that says that Michelle Obama is really a man, Obama's not American, wasn't born in the U.S., I mean, I think that that should be something that you could say, like, look, this is a community relations committee. You are on the far fringe and are purporting conspiracy theories as fact. I don't think that will help us with building community. No, I can be wrong about that. I just, that's my perception. That's kind of what I see. I could be absolutely wrong about that. We don't have a test case to measure against, but that's just, that's how I see it, and I could be wrong, but that's how I see it.
Okay. All right. I'm not sure I agree with you, but fair enough.
I voiced my opinion in the email.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you're, yes, okay.
Are you Jay? Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Okay. So do we want to vote? All right. I'll make a motion to move James Valancourt, to approve James Valancourt to the Community Relations Committee, 1231, 21 expiration date. All in favor? Aye.
You have a second.
Upstaying. Oh, second. Do I need a second? I need a second.
Second.
I said it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And abstaining?
One abstention.
Okay, so one, one, one. All right.
Because I, I mean, I paid him money.
Yeah. Right there. I totally get it. Okay? Fair enough. All right. Dr. Abby Goldberg. Dr. Goldberg is a professor at Clark University. She is an author of a number of books on LGBTQ parenting, marriage, relationships. She's quite honestly brilliant, and she didn't pay me for that. But she's a great add. I don't really even, I, that's all I have to say. I think she's perfect for this committee. I think it was made for her, actually.
Yeah, I can't imagine, you know, her background and everything, I think she'd be a great addition.
Agreed. Omar, anything?
Okay.
Motion?
I'll move to accept Abby Goldberg. Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed, abstaining. Motion passes. So your own. Margaret Kierstein. Margaret, I spoke to her. She's lived in the city 11 and a half years. She loves East Hampton. She loves Non-Toll Park. She is retired. She has a Belgian sheepdog, so you know where our conversations go. She has spent 35 years working in high-conflict domestic relations things in court. I believe she's a psychologist. She used to be on the Cancer Connection Board, I believe. So given all of that, I've talked to her. She was really quite engaging and engaged and very interested in this because of her background and her love of the city. So any other thoughts?
I'm making a motion to accept. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Mary Lou Spain. Mary Lou, also, I spoke with her. She's been here since 2001.
I'll make a motion to accept. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mary Lou Spain. Mary Lou, also I spoke with her. She's been here since 2008. She lives in the Treehouse community. She believes that there is a lot of diversity in East Hampton and it's just not visible. She would like to get it to be more visible and help it to be more. She wants to balance newcomers with folks who have lived here a long time, kind of create a dialogue. Pretty much what we really want this to turn into. She really would like to make sure that affordable housing is something that we keep on the radar as we work through some of this. And not so much low income housing, but affordable. And she's very interested in keeping and helping to make our neighborhoods diverse. Anybody know, she's also from Ohio. So yay Midwest. You can tell the things I wanted. I write down things. Ohio, oh, dog. Anything else that you guys have?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Alyssa O'Leary. Alyssa. Alyssa is, has been here three and a half years. She was born and raised and grew up in Northampton. She used to be a cheerleader at Northampton High School. I say that only because she knew, she knows my wife. Let's see, what do we got here? She lives and works in East Hampton. Her kids go to school in East Hampton. She loves the community, wants to be, and she said, she goes, given all of those things and how much I love this community, and when this popped up, she said, why wouldn't I want to be on this committee to help a community that I love? And I'm like, all right, I got no problem with that. So that's her, that's what we talked about in a nutshell.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Jane Hamel. Jane is a goat peak string. She's a, what are they called? Luthier? Is that what they're called? Look at me. And Jane is also extremely involved in the community. She's very visible. A lot of people really rely on her and seek out her guidance on a lot of different things. She's very, she's very, she's just a great person who loves this community. And I think a lot of people respect her and her views and the hard work that she puts into her business. So I'm a huge fan of Jane.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Emily Britton. 2008, she moved here. She initially was a multimedia producer. That didn't really hold meaning in her life, so she went back to school. She is now a therapist or a group therapist with the VA in Northampton. She loves this community. She's, she is focused on issues related to social justice. She wants this community to maintain its friendliness. And she has lived in a lot of cities prior to settling in East Hampton. A lot of really lovely cities. So I applaud her for landing here because this is a great city as well. Any questions? I don't, other than that, I don't know her.
I'll make a motion to accept. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Rebecca Pasa. I believe she's an attorney. Fun fact, she was telling me she's, she went to Mount Holyoke College and wanted me to know that her grandmother also went to Mount Holyoke and graduated with the class of 1918. I said, all right then. She's lived here since 1993. She was born in Springfield. Let's see, what else? She's in favor of groups consulting together for the betterment of the community. She talked about, which I thought was kind of interesting, she talked about her background from a, I guess religious faith based, you know, from her religious background, that she's been taught to look at unity with diversity, that they belong together. And that those two principles are very tightly woven together, which I found really fascinating. And so she would like to see more diversity and it doesn't just necessarily mean skin color. It's all different views of diversity. Let's see. She does, she did mention mayor about she's interested in some of the potential educational opportunities and some training opportunities that the community could probably do well with. So we talked, we talked for a long time. She's fascinating. So any questions or comments?
No. I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Patty Doherty. Patty used to be the.
AD.
Yeah. At the, was it for the whole district or just the high school?
High school.
Okay. The athletic director. She's now doing something different. She and I kept missing each other. So I didn't get a chance to talk to her directly, but given her engagement with the community and her recent past as working for the high school, I think because of that, she probably has some good insight into the younger folk of the city. So I'll take a motion. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Do you guys have anything to add? You must have something. Okay. Sorry. Anything? Okay. I won't forget you guys. So, Joe, you want to make?
Sure. Make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. I think we made it through the Community Relations Committee. Now we have three more. So Haley Wood for the Affordable and Fair Housing. I also did not get a chance to talk to Haley. So I don't have really any background now. Do either of you know her or have any other chance to reach out to her? Do you have any?
Yeah. She was a very purposeful appointment. It's a logical connection between the Council on Aging, where she does some outreach and some work that we've been doing out of my office, but has been a focus of the Affordable Housing Partnership as well as the Council on Aging Property Subcommittee of what is affordable, how can we add to our affordable stock on all different levels of affordability. And Haley has a good pulse on what's going on with elders. And we're looking at a recent survey that was completed by UMass that about 25% of our current population are considered elder. And in the next 15 years, we're going to about 40%.
Wow.
So there have been some really great conversations over at CLA, but also in the Affordable Partnership of what affordable housing looks like going forward, depending on age and also on siloing. You know, I think we have this idea of this is where the elders live.
Yeah.
And trying to pull that together.
Because we don't, you know, just live in one place.
No, no. And 15 Cottage, I think has been a really good unintentional experiment. We see a little bit of our Treehouse. But 15 Cottage has a really great mix of folks and it's really a nice, a nice little indoor neighborhood over there.
Awesome.
Yeah.
You want to keep on track?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for Haley Wood. Peter Nelson, the ECA Cultural Council with expiration 1231-2021. I also did not connect with him. His email was not correct. Or at least it's handwritten, so I may have mistyped it. But, so I couldn't get in touch with him. So I don't have any intel on Peter. Do you guys have anything?
I can't answer.
Yeah, I mean, the building up the Grant Committee and also the ECA Plus Board has kind of been a focus as we gear up to signing 44 year lease with City Space and get that project really into its next push. We also have some grant funded activity with the Arts Coordinator around visioning for the arts in the next 20 years and need all hands on deck. Mr. Nelson had conversations with Husklin as well as with Rachel Phillips around what he might lend and was willing to serve and be a part of a more formal, kind of robust steering committee by actually being on the boards.
Okay. Okay. I'll take a motion.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A little more energy, Mr. McCoy. Okay. Last one. Deanna Wertz Medevire for the Conservation Commission, 1231-2021. I was able to connect with Deanna. She has lived in East Hampton for the last one and a half years. She was born and raised in North Carolina. Her parents are really actively involved in her community in North Carolina. And that's kind of what modeled her interest in becoming more involved in this community. She does, what did she call it? Oh, an environmental scientist. And so that felt pretty aligned to the Conservation Commission. She works on projects related to natural resources, engineering, I mean, things of that nature. So.
It looks like she was.
Felt pretty good about that.
She heard about it from the chair of the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a good connection.
So anything for you guys? I'll take a motion.
So move.
And, okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now, we also had a couple, one other agenda topic, which was the appointment form, if you will. And I know from the minutes, Joe, that you were going to have additional conversations around the email. Did we close out the email issue yet?
No. And I didn't follow up. But maybe since the mayor's here, she can add to it. I had a brief discussion, I don't know if you told you this, we were thinking just not only for us to be out, access the boards of chairs and committees as far as if someone's reapplying for appointment, but even for the public, like if they want to, would it be, is it possible to just have a broad, general email board and committee chair that could be used by every committee? And the subject line would say Planning Board or ECA Plus. I mentioned to Alan, he was like, he was concerned that there could be a constituent request that could sit out there and not be addressed. So, but he was thinking maybe something, somewhere could be done that would go through your office. So Lindsay or whatever would see every email just to make sure that wasn't a constituent request that could be ignored. And then either forward them on to whatever.
I think that's more practical. I mean, it happens now. You know, mayor@easthamptonme dot com. We get all sorts of requests, just, you know, where can I find the planning board minutes? Or how do I get ahold of someone or whatnot? And, you know, we get them. Lindsay and Alan have made concerted effort, it's almost done, to get current emails and phone numbers for all the chairs. At least, and then working down with all the committee members. So we can make sure that we have a current list.
And we may be all set from that respect. Because we may have a very accurate spreadsheet.
But, you know, a large question would be as we're going through the communication plans for the city, what is the obligation or responsibility of those who are serving on, you know, a committee to be, how are they responsible? So we talk about attendance to meetings. We talk about being able and knowledgeable when they vote. You know, it's recorded, but, you know, to members of the public, you know, when we started surveying websites, sometime, you know, you'll see, you know, Joe McCoy at, you know, and if he weren't elected, it would be, you know, joemcoy@aol.com or whatever it is. So to reach out directly. Figuring out if that's a policy or, I know it seems some cities encourage folks to maybe, maybe you should make an email just for your, you know, so you're not giving out the email that you get your bills out to. Or the cost under our new email system to like give chairs an email, I haven't gotten an answer back. But I also haven't pursued it because we're tightening up the school website and changing over some other stuff. And I honestly have just dropped the ball to see what the cost would be. I know there was a concern Alan brought up, as did Lindsay, it's another email for people to look at. And will they do it? Do they know that they can just forward this chair email to their regular email account? If they want to do that. And then to make it them responsible. I also, I mean, I would worry about timelessness. I mean, I think about somebody who is bringing something before the planning board and they're sending their materials not to somebody in the planning department, Jamie or Jeff.
To boards of committees.
To boards of committee, which would make right, that's where it's going. And then, you know, a tolling period starts where we have to respond or, you know, review. Planning comes up very quickly for me because of the process, you know, starts way before the meeting and materials are prepared and, you know, the applications are a little different. So for somebody to not get a response and be able to lie on that lack of responses, everything is okay. Yeah, it could be problematic. Yeah, it could be problematic. It's not fair.
Yeah.
But, but I mean, forwarding it, you know, to my office or even to the mayor or something, you know, boards and committee, probably something short than that. But it's, you know, it's, I can't imagine it's a lot of email. I mean, it's something. We have a whole bunch of emails, accounts that we monitor of how people can, you know, access the city and make sure that they get to their place.
So I'm sorry, Joe, I maybe struck in the middle of this conversation. But, so are you suggesting, are we saying maybe a singular email that forwards to the mayor@easthampton.com?
Yeah, or for some reason, you know, it was called, we called boards of committees@easthampton.
Yeah.
And the idea of someone wanted to ask a question about our quarter committee. And the idea too was there was a way for us to communicate with the chair of the planning board, this person's out for. But I understand the concern that if it was used for official business and it wasn't addressed. So the idea was that we could still do it. But Lindsay, someone in the mayor's office would oversee every email that came through in case it was something that, no, 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 that's planning board. I need to pull this out right now.
Oh, I see.
But, I mean, since if we're going to get an updated spreadsheet, I think from our perspective, that is less concerning to me. But what is, is the best way for the public still to ask questions about boards and committee is to ask the mayor.
And I think that's a vetting of a communication plan. I mean, so we have a draft that was prepared by a grad student down in Georgetown University as the master's plan. And those were, it was a nice summary of how people learn about East Hampton, what's the activity on Facebook, what's the activity on, you know, comments on newspapers and whatnot. But then it wasn't like a, it needs to be, there needs to be a conversation about, you know, how do people want to, you know, communicate with the government? And also people who are serving in the government, you know, as volunteers, what do they feel the expectation should be? And we did send out an employee survey on that and we also sent out a community survey. And we've got some information that will at least fuel down the, you know, it's one of my goals for the coming year. You know, some public discussion, like community forums, public forums about, you know, expectation and what people like about the plan and what needs to be changed or what doesn't like, you know, ring true or false or whatnot. But we're not the, you know, I haven't followed up on that. And I would be worried about imposing that without a fuller conversation. You know, so there's kind of a standardization of expectation of communication. If in the intermediate or intermediate, there is that kind of general email that comes through the mayor's office. We do, we get a lot of those, you know, conversation, like those questions about planning board or what happened, like even what happened to my appointment, you know, I went to city council and da, da, da. You know, just answered that.
To that point, actually, I was telling everybody that applied, that you will likely hear from the mayor's office on Thursday. How quickly after we approve any of these nominations, do you let them know you were approved?
We try to do as fast as possible, especially if there's a meeting coming up and we're telling them that they're approved and they need to come in and sign.
Okay.
So there's, there's a letter that goes out saying, mayor's going to put your appointment forward and kind of explain the process, that it goes to, you know, city council to this and to that, that it's not overnight.
Right.
That they can't now expect to walk into a meeting and be able to vote.
Right.
We encourage them to go to the meetings so they know what's going on. And then there's a letter congratulating them and reminding them they need to come to the city clerk's office and sign the book.
Does it, does it go like, would it, does it go out like tomorrow or would it go out next week or?
Again, I mean, as soon as it, I mean, sure, if Lindsay gets to it tomorrow.
Oh, okay. It's not like that. Okay.
And there are certain committees that where we know that they may need somebody. And there are certain committees that where we know that they may need somebody to vote, like, you know...
That you want to kind of fast track.
That we need to get at and say, "Hey, we might call them and say..."
Do you know yet when this first meeting will be of the Community Relations Committee? Do we have any sort of a...
No, we, we are starting to, to look at folks like speakers, but also training. It just, but it depends when they're, they're appointed.
Can I ask one little quick, as I, I may have just, excuse my previous, myself. What am I thought considering the welcoming community ordinance? Is that something we should consider submitting to ordinance as well as the CRC? I mean, is, isn't that what we want them to do? Should they be looking involved in this and looking at that as well?
I, um, I don't know. I, yeah, I don't know. And, and I would say, I don't know, because I haven't thought about it that way, but I also, you know, what I told the applicants, like, this is really a big responsibility, because once this forms and the chair is selected, it's not my agenda. Like, what do you guys, you know, what do you guys feel that, you know, and starting with that, the report, and starting with what's coming before, you know, city, or what they feel, or why they want to be on, or building rules, they might say they want to weigh in.
We could certainly invite them to the ordinance meeting, because they may not be a body yet by the time it gets...
Well, we're a body once we create them.
Right.
They may not have organized yet, but...
Right.
But my concern is, I mean, I can't imagine, since my time at city council, anything that has been more divisive in our community, and so why would you create a Community Relations Commission and not have them involved in this discussion?
No, and I, I'm not saying they are, I really...
We just haven't thought about it.
I haven't thought about it. No, I'm not saying we shouldn't. I mean, I would assume that they would weigh, would want to weigh in, but I'm not on the bid, just a point.
So, would she just like, so she got to be sure?
Well, I got seven minutes, I took off, but...
Get your bean face on.
Different than the appointment, thanks.
Right.
Right, right.
Because I know the city council.
Actually, I have to bring it, I have it.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
We have a new business for, it's a new appointment, so we have to schedule.
Oh, we need a new meeting.
March six.
March six.
Six.
That, we set the new meeting at March sixth at five.
I'm making a motion to adjourn. Okay.
And I second it. Oh, I don't second it. And, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, everyone. Aye.
Close enough.
Yeah, close.